The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of January 10, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. In keeping with the council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on this afternoon's agenda are given two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are also given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on this afternoon's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda nor for items, nor for non-agenda items.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Closed session, item 5A, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation, two matters. And closed session, item 5B, conference with labor negotiator.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Move to closed session.
Return to closed session. Reconvening the 3:30 meeting, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. In terms of closed session action, on item 5A, there were two matters of potential litigation, and there was no reportable action on either of those items. In item 5B, there is also no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we stand adjourned at 5:24. And we'll start the 5:15 meeting in just a few minutes. Sorry for the delay. We're going to give tech services a few minutes to switch out.
Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 10:00 a.m., and the following Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular city council meeting of January 10, 2024. Happy New Year to all of you. Welcome. Glad to have you here. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. We have the pleasure tonight of having Pastor Dr. Dwayne Cantrell of Living Victory Church to offer the invocation. He also serves as the Associate Vice President, Chief Enrollment Officer at CSUB. Go runners. And then following the invocation, we'll have Thomas Woods, Jr., who's a junior at Bakersville High School. Go Drellers, who will lead us in the pledge. He's the Ward II Alternate Youth Commissioner, ASB Junior Class President with a 4.4 GPA, National Honor Society, and National Spanish Honor Society, VHS Cross Country Football and Varsity Tennis, and Link Crew. So all-around, all-around winner. Thank you so much for all of your contributions on the commission, too. Now, would you all please stand?
Thank you, Mayor Go. As this is the first city council meeting of the new year, this simple expression from scripture seems appropriate. In Isaiah 43:19, God says, "See, I am doing a new thing; now it springs up. Do you not perceive it?" Let us pray. For the new thing, Lord, that you are doing in this city and in our lives, as we live together in this community, we pray your blessings on Mayor Go, Vice Mayor Gonzalez, and everyone on this council. We ask for your wisdom and grace for this meeting, and we pray that all the words and deeds of this evening be pleasing in your sight. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Now, if we will do the flag salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Thomas. Pastor, it was a blessing to visit your church. Beautiful worship. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos, and for safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and effective meeting, efficient meeting, too, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, proclamation to Dustin Contreras, co-director of the Kern Coalition Against Human Trafficking, declaring Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Bakersfield during January 2024.
Human trafficking destroys lives. It's an abomination that we will not tolerate in Bakersfield or in Kern County. We are blessed in our community to have fighters, people who say, "We will not let this go on." We're grateful for the coalition, for the task force that District Attorney Zimmer has put together. We're grateful for the Kern Coalition Against Human Trafficking, and we are joined tonight by the co-chair, Dustin Contreras. So many partners who are saying, "We're going to work against this." And we're grateful for Senator Grove and her active opposition to this heinous crime and making sure that our minors are protected. And so tonight, it is my honor to read this proclamation. Whereas human trafficking has become a modern-day version of slavery that exploits victims through coercion, and whereas human trafficking is the world's fastest-growing criminal enterprise, generating more than $200 billion globally, using the Internet and social media to target adults and youth as young as 11 to 14, and whereas victims are isolated and forced to hide the crime, and local citizens are largely unaware of the trafficking taking place in their community, and whereas Human Trafficking Awareness Month highlights the plight of victims and encourages our citizens to support anti-trafficking professionals in their continued efforts to combat all forms of human trafficking in Kern County. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim, January 2024, as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in our city, and call upon all of our citizens to obliterate this dreadful crime in our community and around the world. It is my honor to be able to present this to Dustin Contreras. Dustin, thank you so much for your work and the work of your team.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to the rest of the council. I just wanted to, I know we're running short on time. I want to do some quick thank yous. I couldn't have said it better. January is the perfect time when we talk about human trafficking. We kind of almost forget all the things that are happening. If I were to bring in the entire team here, and let me remind you, the Kern Coalition Against Human Trafficking is entirely volunteers. So most of us are government workers. This is a passion that maybe our job brought us to, but we continued the work after. I've been a detective for a very long time, but I continue to stay on as the co-chair with that. And there's a lot of pillars that are in the community that are actually involved with KCAT, so I like to kind of put them out so people do know that the work is being done. We do do things kind of behind closed doors. We don't actively ask for donations and put survivors in front of you to tell you their story. That's not our style. We do commission survivors and lived, experienced experts to help us in our plight and direct us on how trafficking is happening, because trafficking changes depending on where you are. Now, most of you do know Kern County, specifically Bakersfield, is known in a different way in how trafficking happens. So this is the last stop before you get to Vegas, where a trafficker will then tell their victim what the intent is before they get to Vegas. So it's practice leading up to the Super Bowl. You have to have your team ready. So when you get to the Super Bowl, all of that is done in Bakersfield. They don't stop at Barstow. They don't stop in Tehachapi. They don't stop anywhere else. It is done here, which is why typically a lot of our victims are from other counties and other states. So that is the one thing that has not changed. So we maintain the coalition for that reason. It is the groundwork of a task force. And I kind of want to give some special thanks to our victim service providers. So some of you are always familiar with Lauren Skidmore and the Open Door Network, formerly the Alliance Against Family Violence and Sexual Assault. Carol Beecroft of the Women's Center High Desert is the equivalent of that in the East County. So from Tehachapi through the lake area, all the way through California City, that is all maintained by them. They are the boots on the ground, so to speak, that are coming across victims, that are passing through the county or live in the county, that are seeking that help. And that first, when you talk about rescue, it's not what you typically think, that uniformed officers are pulling people out of a building. It's usually these people that are coming across the victims first and then collaborating with our law enforcement. Kristin Kaufman from the DA's Family Justice Center, that is part of the Human Trafficking Task Force that our district attorney has created. Our DHS people, they run what we refer to as a CSEC. So anyone that's trafficked under the age of 18, children, that's who runs them. So they had 144 investigations for the calendar year of 2023. Those are 144 separate children. That is not the total number that has happened, because some of those investigations were given to other counties where the trafficking occurred. Here, they were just located here in Bakersfield or Kern County. So I put that into perspective. Those numbers always grow, and I always get asked about data and numbers. The thing I'm concerned about are the numbers that we don't see. And that's why I want to thank the council, because it's awareness like this, proclamations like this, that keep the awareness going. And unfortunately, when we see those numbers rise, we also know that those numbers are being handled by our law enforcement, and some people are being put away for that, which allows me to segue into Senator Shannon Grove. She, when we can't, if a lot of awareness can't happen, we go for legislation. She championed that legislation, was able to get it passed just to make it show more consequences for traffickers, that if you use violence, it's a violent crime, and also if you repeat offend, it's a strike against you. And that is important, because most traffickers do reoffend after they come out. It's what they know. It's their business. It's what they do. I'll finish reminding everyone that an estimated 27.6 million people are subjected to human trafficking globally, including cases of human trafficking reported in every U.S. state and territory, especially California, which has the highest numbers of that. Human trafficking can be prevented by building individual, community, and societal understanding of resilience, reducing social inequities, and addressing the conditions that contribute to exploitation. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Mahdi Perez-Daleng, Councilman Arias at the United Way, who has, United Way has taken a step to work on collaborating with KCAT to abolish human trafficking within the people they serve. So that is very important when we talk about that resilience. But I want to give the special thanks to our survivors. The survivors and victims of human trafficking, like I said, guide us. It's going to be them that lead us and make sure that we eradicate human trafficking in Bakersfield and everywhere. So again, I want to thank the council for proclaiming it this month. It's always bittersweet to do this. I hope one day that we don't have to come here and do these types of proclamations. Thank you again.
Our next item is public statements. In keeping with the council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received one speaker card for items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Lisa Smith.
Welcome, Ms. Smith. Please introduce yourself.
Hi. I'm Lisa Smith, and what I'd really love to say to you tonight is the freeway's done, but it's not. So I'm sorry. It's had to. I wanted to let you know that I had some very positive interactions with your staff since our last meeting, when I spoke to you. Unfortunately, following that meeting, I was notified by members of the area that the homeless people had set fire, four of them, to properties directly adjacent to their homes. And I brought that concern to staff, and thank you, Mrs. Gray, for having the battalion chief at our meeting, which was really helpful. And Public Works got out there and moved all the fuel sources the next day. So in a lot of ways, we're making progress. Of course, nothing is going to make us happier than having the freeway done, and I think you share that feeling. But we are making some progress. We still have a lot of stuff to work on. There's fencing issues that are creating problems. I'm hopeful, and I thank you for letting me come talk to you and say thank you for what you've done. And unfortunately, I'll probably be here a couple more times. But thank you again for having your staff work with me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We appreciate your being here. You're welcome to come as many times as you need to. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Smith for your commitment to the community and your advocacy on behalf of the neighborhood in which you live. I think that's really important, and I really appreciate it, I for one. I know my colleagues join me in appreciation for your volunteerism and your leadership in the community, trying to make it a better place. And that's certainly what we all want. So we're going to continue to work on it collectively. And kudos to staff for all their hard work. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Jasper Slack.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself. You might raise the mic just a little, please.
Hello. Can I hear you? Okay. My name is Jasper Slack. Just an average citizen. I wanted to propose outdoor fitness equipment in our public parks. We currently have one in City of the Hills, and I believe there is one in Riverwalk. But I wanted to propose them in lower socioeconomic neighborhoods in town. And I just, specifically, the equipment I'm asking for is resistance equipment, because if you just put, say, pull-up bars out there, only people with a certain level of fitness can actually use those. But if you add resistance equipment to the parks, then people of all ages and all fitness levels will be able to use this equipment. And there's multiple benefits. I mean, there's tons of research on the benefits of physical health with exercise. There's research on the benefits of the mental health of exercise. For society, it encourages us to walk to the parks. We can take our children to the parks. And as I'm watching my daughter play at the park, I can also be exercising, so we could both be exercising. It encourages us to mingle and speak and make friends amongst the community, amongst the neighborhoods, people we, maybe we wouldn't have talked to. So I just wanted to propose that and maybe see if we can get that done for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Slack. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Slack, for your comment. I love the idea. I think it's wonderful, and I think it'll be a great amenity for some of our parks, particularly those in, as you described, those disadvantaged neighborhoods that sorely need equipment and resistance equipment. Oftentimes, many of my constituents can't necessarily afford a gym membership on a monthly basis, and so this could be an alternative, and I love it. It's almost the perfect timing as well, because we're just about to wrap up our Parks Master Plan. And so we can include elements of this in the Parks Master Plan as we move forward. And I also want to, if you don't know him, introduce you to our Recreation of Parks director, who's in the room tonight, Mr. Rick Anthony, who's in the back. Give us a wave. And he's ready with his card already for you, so you guys can connect. And, but thank you so much for being here tonight and for giving us a wonderful, wonderful idea to work on.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, item 6A, one appointment at large to the Police Civil Service Board to serve a term to expire on December 31, 2026, due to the term expiration of Kelly Lucas on December 31, 2023. Three applications for appointment have been received from Michael Burrow, Ronald Wolfe, and Luis David.
Thank you. As the city clerk provides ballots to the council, I'd like to clarify the voting process for you. Although the council will use ballots, the outcome of the vote will be made public by the clerk. Based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding each appointment. Following the council meeting, the individual ballots will be available for public review in the city clerk's office. Just remember to put your board number on your ballots, please. While we're waiting for the results, thank you to the office of Dr. Jessmeade Baines for being here, Assemblywoman.
Michael Burrow received three votes. Ronald Wolfe received two votes. David, Luis David, received two votes. The person receiving the highest number of points for the three-year term is Michael Burrow.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Move to appoint Mr. Michael Burrows to the Police Civil Service Board.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Burrow, for your service. Some of you might know him better by Brian Burrow, which is the name that's more commonly used. Thank you. Next item, please. Oh, I'm sorry. We probably need to vote, don't we? You have a motion. Please catch your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Next item, please.
Consent calendar, items 7A through 7AP for approval.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one request from Councilmember Gray to pull consent item AI from the consent calendar. So with that, I approve the consent calendar with the exception of 7AI.
You have a motion. Please catch your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Gray, item 8AI.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 8AI is our state-
7AI, sorry.
And I followed right behind you. Our state legislative program, and so I found this to be really interesting and enjoyed going through it. But I would like to make a motion to approve it with a couple of suggestions or changes. So on page 12, number three, it says, "Advocate for reasonable and measured relief from state regulations related to energy production, agriculture production, and goods movement." Totally in favor of that. I believe all of us here would be. But then it goes on to the second sentence. It says, "Continue to support and pursue state programs or funding opportunities to diversify the economy, including the Regional Economic Prosperity Initiative." I am very much for diversifying our economy, but at the same time, I want to make sure that our legislative platform really highlights and puts a big spotlight on our industry of agriculture, oil, and goods movement. So my suggestion would be is to make those two separate priorities, separate them out, to protect our mainstay industries, and that's oil ag and goods movement. So that's my first proposal. My second one is, and I know you all have heard me talk about this from the dais, this kind of sticks in my craw. On page 15, this is under number five, "Advocate for and pursue state programs or funding initiatives in support of improved social determinants of health." Very much for that. But there's one sentence in here that I would like to have moved if we could, and it says, "In 2022, there were 66 traffic fatalities, half of which include a pedestrian." I don't believe that's probably where this should go with the statistics that we got from our chief of police as of, I think it was September, October, where he shared with me that 100% of the pedestrian fatalities, again, were at the hand of the, were at the fault of the pedestrian. So I'd like to move that out of that section and put that under where we're trying to receive funding for behavioral health. I think it would fit there better, because we're trying to get as much funding as we can from the state to tackle these, you know, homeless issues and behavioral health issues. And I think that would be a better place to put it. So I'm not saying strike it. I'm just saying, let's move it to where I think it will benefit us most for funding. And then the third thing was, again, putting the- And then the third thing was, again, putting the emphasis on local control. If we go to Number 5, "Improve the quality of life and sustainability of the city," which is page 21, on page 22, it was struck out, "Oppose legislation that would diminish local control to set and assess development review and building inspection fees," and oppose, which is what we want to do, "and oppose legislation or governance that attempts to supersede adopted planning documents, local documents, or projects that have already been approved through appropriate processes." So when I spoke with our city manager about this, he said those got moved into another category or down further, but I would like to propose that we keep that language there. It doesn't hurt anything, even though it's redundant. It, again, shows that we are very much for local control and not losing our autonomy to state and federal governments. So I would like to keep that language back in. So I'd like to make a motion to accept those three changes and to approve the state legislative platform.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Gray, for the recommendations. I think that, for the most part, sounds pretty reasonable. I do, though, request that we remain, we keep the language the same on page 15 with regard to pedestrian fatalities, because I think it's an important issue. It's a critical issue facing our community, and that we have to tackle it at all fronts. And so I would make a motion that we accept two of the three recommendations tonight, but we remain the same with regard to the language on page 15 regarding the citation of the fact that in 2022, there were 66 traffic fatalities, half of which include a pedestrian, as compared to 26 traffic fatalities in 2018. And I'll make that motion.
Okay.
It's our process for the second motion. Do you wish to speak, Councilmember?
Well, I have a question for the city attorney, because I'm not sure how to handle this, because we're going to vote on the second motion first. And respectfully, I would still like to see it with the first motion. If I vote against the second motion, is that voting against all the proposed changes? So how does this work?
No. Mayor, Vice Mayor, the second motion goes first. What I would suggest, however, is I'd like to hear from a little bit more of you on what you intend to do. What may be easier, with the Vice Mayor's okay, is to take each one at a time. I don't know how many of you intend to speak to each of Councilmember Gray's suggestions. If more than one of you has issues with it, that may be the better way to do it.
I think I would agree, and that way everybody can say yea or nay to each one of those things that I've proposed, instead of it's all or nothing. Is that what you're saying?
I am, but the Vice Mayor has already put a motion on the table, and so I'm looking to him to ask him to either withdraw his motion and you go take yours one at a time, but he has the floor right now.
Okay.
Well, thank you. I mean, I am perfectly fine with two of the three recommendations. And so really, this motion is in consideration of that third suggestion. So that would be, for all intents and purposes, the vote at this moment.
I understand that, Vice Mayor. I just don't know if your other colleagues are going to have difficulty with the other aspects of Councilmember Gray's motion, and if that's the case-
Well, now's our opportunity to speak.
That is right. That's why I suggested that I hear from a little bit more from your colleagues, and then perhaps then, you've made the last motion, you would have the ability then to either withdraw it and do as I suggest, or move forward with your motion.
I'd love to hear from my colleagues.
We now have some requests to speak. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say that I'm okay with the motions as currently laid out and voting. Thanks.
Councilmember Freeman.
Well, I actually would like to have three separate motions, because I think it's more clarity that way. Everybody knows exactly, and if there needs to be debate on one of them back and forth, this seems to be, make it easier. So I would like to be able to vote on each motion and each one of those individually.
Is there anybody else who wishes to comment? Councilmember Weir.
I make a motion that we consider the three issues separately and move forward with the rest of the motion.
Any other requests to speak at this point? If not, you have a motion, please catch your votes.
Just for clarity, this is a motion, simply a procedural motion. The motion is, would you like to see all three of those motions separately? And then Councilmember Gray will have to articulate each one.
Are you all voting?
Motion is approved, with Vice Mayor Gonzalez voting no.
Okay. Councilmember-
Gray.
Gray.
First motion.
First motion. Can I simplify it this time? Just make the motion. Okay. So on page 12, under Number 3, I would like to separate, advocate for reasonable measure relief from state regulations related to energy, agriculture, production, and goods movement. And the second sentence, "Continue to support and pursue state programs or funding opportunities to diversify the economy, including the Regional Economic Prosperity Initiative." I would like to divide those into two priorities, separating them out.
Thank you. Any comments before we go to the vote? You have a motion, please catch your votes. Councilmember Gray?
Motion is unanimously approved.
Okay, the second one is on page 15, where it says, "In 2022, there were 66 traffic fatalities, half of which include a pedestrian." If we could just strike "half of which include a pedestrian" in that and add that language into, under the behavioral health portion, that would be my second motion.
Any comments? See none? You have a motion, please catch your votes.
Motion fails, with Councilmember Gonzalez, Arias, Smith, and Corr voting no.
Okay.
And your third?
And my third motion on page 22 would be to keep the wordage that was struck out, to keep that wordage.
I don't see any requests for comments. You have a motion, please catch your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
And so now, do we need a motion for the ballots? City Attorney? For the rest of the items? We do, yes. So Vice Mayor?
Yeah, motion to approve the remaining items in the legislative platform.
Don't see any requests to speak. You have a motion, please catch your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Question from City Manager. How are we doing on beds? I thought I heard in homeless beds, I thought you put in one of your reports that we were full or had a waiting list at Brundage Lane. And if that is the case, I guess that's goodness, badness, that people are trying to get in, which we like to hear, but that there are people who are being turned away. And are we now at least analyzing a plan to expand again so that, because from the time we make a decision, it always takes us at least a year to get anything done. So if we're not planning for it now, and I don't know if we have to wait till an annual budget cycle, because, you know, I don't know, we have to order equipment, and maybe TI work, but all of these, it seems to me if we are short now, and we know we continue to have a problem, I mean, I got called on the way down here because of more break-ins and harassment with peoples in their homes at night. So we know we've got people coming out of the river, and I don't know if those people ever had a chance to go to the homeless shelter or not, but we need to expand at least Brundage Lane by another 50 or 100 beds, I think, so that we have an opportunity for everybody who wants to go to get in. So I would ask that you start planning for that now as opposed to waiting for three months or six months so that nothing gets implemented for another year. You can respond.
Yeah, sure, Councilmember Freeman. Couple responses, but I did hear the request in the direction to do analysis. We do regularly have a waiting list for clients at Brundage Lane Navigation Center. That waiting list varies anywhere from 50 to 70 people on any given week. And we do know that most of our other shelters are typically at or near capacity as well, as well as the Safe Camp area at the M Street Navigation Center that the county manages. And so we have not begun analysis on any expansion at Brundage Lane Navigation Center. Based on your question, we can do some analysis of what additional beds would look like. I would reflect as well that part of our challenge, I think, is not just the emergency shelter beds. We don't, we may need more, we'll do some analysis. We also don't want to overbuild and then end up with too many shelter beds in the long run, because it's a bottleneck of getting people into permanent supportive housing. But it's a fair analysis to make sure that we conduct. The other piece is also, what are some of the other alternative ways to create beds? And so the county right now is doing a tiny homes project in Oildale that will open up probably later this year, and whether or not the city, you know, needs to look at additional safe camp or tiny home beds as opposed to Brundage Lane Navigation Center beds, and what some of those cost comparisons might be. Because our ability to basically build out to the full square footage at Brundage Lane Navigation Center allowed us to do the initial expansion. If we expanded our square footage footprint at this point, we're talking about very considerable costs, but there may be other ways to look at additional beds that are not quite as expansive as changing the actual square footage. And we can do that analysis.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir.
Thank you. I'm wondering if you could do another analysis force, too. Could you look back at the last two years of CalPERS, the current year that we're in, and the anticipated next two years of what tragedy is going to befall us on their shortage of investment returns? And could you also include the total CalPERS payments that the city made for each year and then assume for the next couple of years? I think it's time for us to start taking a good look at that, because that's, when we have $38 billion or $68 billion deficits up there, it's something that maybe we should just pay attention to. So, thank you.
Councilmember, we're happy to do that. It's become such an issue. We've hired a firm to help us calculate that and forecast that, so we can get that for you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Just following up on the vandalism and homeless beds. We've talked for a number of years about getting some help with the sheriff and the sheriff's beds, and that he has room, but he doesn't have people, and they passed their Measure K. And so I'm hopeful that we're getting close, and if you could give us an update or at least continue that dialogue, because that is an answer to our problem that we're not getting.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I'll actually take opportunity, that was something that was in my head as I was responding to Councilmember Freeman's topic, but I missed that point, is that we recognize that there are some individuals that continue to be service resistant and do not want to go into shelter beds, and we're finding in our data analysis, those are often the same individuals that are, you know, making the biggest impact to the quality of life for our businesses and our residents. And so we have been in conversations with the county about their staffing plan. They have increased their budget for detention deputies. They have made salary range adjustments to incentivize more detention deputies, and they are making significant progress in hiring detention deputies. We are in conversations with the county about whether or not even the city could be a partner in making more jail beds available as they staff up. And so our timeframe that the county had shared with us is actually as of this early 2024, that we would get together and make some plans for the next fiscal years. When they project, they'll be able to look at whether or not they can hire additional staff to fill additional beds they're targeting this July.
Thank you. That's a critical piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just three points. One, I just appreciate what Councilmember Freeman brought up with regard to beds, emergency shelter beds for our unhoused population. We know a few things. One, from our Housing and Homelessness Committee, that there are roughly 50 individuals who are turned away from BLNC on a monthly basis because there are no beds available. And so we ought to explore ways in which we can at least identify that goal and meet that goal of those 50 beds. When we designed BLNC, we designed it and we purchased the property with the understanding that at max capacity, we can actually hold 450 individuals and house 450 individuals there in that shelter. I'm not suggesting that at all, that we move to that number, but I do think that it is an indicator that we can look at ways in which we can extend capacity. We also were very intentional early on at purchasing beds that were, that would allow us to create bunk beds as well. So maybe that is also an option for us that I'd like to see us explore in the near future. Number two is, I received a wonderful idea from the World War II Memorial Committee. These individuals had worked hard at raising money to develop this beautiful memorial in Jostro Park in World War II. They'd like to enhance signage on Truxton Avenue to highlight all of the various different memorials by, through a banner program that they're calling the Avenue of Heroes. And so I'd like to make a referral tonight to Public Works and to all of the other respective departments to engage the World War II Memorial Committee to fully develop that concept and see what we can do as we move into the next fiscal year. I think that's a wonderful thing. And then the final item that I have to bring to attention is, as we work towards revitalization and cleaning up a lot of areas in the urban core, and particularly as we look towards revitalization of southeast Bakersfield, I have to bring up that there is the Kern Island Canal that is in so much need, in dire need, for some improvement by way of enhanced screening. So we have all of these slats on these fences along H Street, along P Street, that are all broken, many of them are missing, and it's just a blight for that particular section of town. I think it's an easy win for us to go ahead and make an expenditure and enhance that area and replace all of those slats, and also address the screening concerns that our constituents at McKinley Elementary School have with regard to the canal that's adjacent to their campus on Fourth Street. They're having significant problems with people in the canal, and they want to protect- want to protect the children there at McKinley Elementary. I think that we ought to take the lead at enhancing the screening that's adjacent to their property. So I'd like to make that referral as well tonight. Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. As our colleague, Councilmember Freeman, was speaking about the extra beds, it was going through my mind that we really do need to lay more of this burden at the feet of the county because the city has taken on definitely its lion's share of this. And so that's where I would like to see the pressure, instead of us taking on more expense, try to divert some of this expense over to the county as much as we possibly can. So I appreciate the meetings that you're having, Christian, and I think that's what we need to really push towards is not depleting all of our resources here at the city when the county needs to step up to the plate some. So, and like it was said, they have Measure K now. So, you know, we did this on Measure N. They can use some of their Measure K money. And I would definitely agree with Councilmember Gonzalez on those banners. That was brought to my attention probably, I don't know, six months ago or so, not to present it, but it was just an idea that was floating around. And we still have some of those clean hand signs up in the city. We need to get those down. And we're way past that. And it would be a good place to put those banners for our veterans. Thank you. And Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you. And Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. One, just want to commend Vice Mayor Gonzalez and all the work that we've done together to really build out a new vision for MLK Park. And I was excited to see just a couple of weeks ago that we have started demolition on the formerly African American Veteran Center that was beyond repair. And so we're super excited to see that progress. And actually had two former constituents reach out who were just inquiring about what our plans were. And I was excited to share those plans. So thank you, Rick, for your vision there and your leadership. Second, I also want to thank Greg and his team. I believe it was on December 20th, early in the morning. We met there just across the street from Golden Valley and talked about some of the roadway improvements. We had the Greenfield Walking Group and a couple of others represented. And there are clearly some needs. And I think it's only been, you know, a couple of weeks. And so Public Works has already installed a couple of signs. I saw that there were some cones out there so that students, as they travel from Golden Valley and some of the other adjacent schools, at least have some level of protection while we look into some more fortified structures to protect them as they walk. The last is, I want to comment on Councilmember Freeman's comments about the Brundage Lane Navigation Center. I think it's important that we're prepared for those scenarios. But I think also, too, I wanted to uplift actually some of the work that United Way does. So through a partnership with Current Health Systems, they've actually been able to provide security deposit assistance to individuals. And in conversation with Theo and his team at BLNC, we're actually in the process of placing, I believe, seven, if I'm not mistaken, seven or eight individuals in permanent supportive housing. And this was the final piece of getting them moved out from the BLNC. So I don't think it's necessary that I make a referral, but I'd like to ask staff to engage folks at the BLNC and then also some of the other shelters. Because I know that we have had conversations about rental assistance. But if, you know, these dollars are literally helping folks get out of homelessness, I think that could also be part of the solution as we continue to try and bring more people off the streets into our shelters. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. The Kern County Board of Supervisors took action yesterday on anti-encampment ordinance. And I asked, I've received some questions. I'm imagining my colleagues have also. Why can't we do the same thing? Our city attorney provided a very good clarification for me. And city attorney, I'm wondering if you would be just able to share it with the public. Just people asking, why don't we do the same thing? But if you could go ahead and provide some clarification, that would be very helpful.
Thank you, Mayor. Succinctly stated, we don't need to. We have enough laws on the books, and our entire city is an anti-camping zone. Period. End of discussion. The issue really comes down to enforcement. And I think, as the council has mentioned tonight, the number of beds. We don't have the number of beds, and I think the council has directed staff to look into that. So that is the short succinct answer to the question.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Happy New Year to all of you. And with that, we stand adjourned at 6:19.